Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the month of September 2019. The Board of Commissioners did meet an executive session from 5:30 to 7:00 PM this evening to discuss a personnel matter. And now I ask our Township Manager and Secretary Dave Berman, please call the roll.
Mr. DiMillo.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel.
Here.
Mr. McGarrett.
Here.
Dr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Wexler.
Here.
Mr. Holm.
Here.
And Mr. Lewis.
Here. Thank you, Dave. Please rise and join our Chief in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Chief. I would just ask that we observe a moment of silence for the loss of life and human suffering from the recent hurricane. So if you take a moment of silence. Thank you. Agenda item number two is a statement regarding the Bon Air Fire Company and update. Read the statement on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. By unanimous action, the Board of Commissioners ratifies the actions undertaken by our Township Manager on Wednesday, September 4, 2019, and previously considered by this Board in executive session, decertifying Bon Air Fire Company from service and repossessing the Township's equipment in Bon Air's possession. It is the unwavering policy of Harford Township to ensure that all persons enjoy the full benefits of citizenship and equal opportunities in all things. This applies to all services provided by Harford Township, as well as those services provided by organizations receiving support from or representing the Township. Harford Township will serve each and every person equally, regardless of race, color, religious creed, ancestry, age, sex, national origin, handicap or disability, sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression. It is crucial to understand that Harford Township, the Harford Township Board of Commissioners and Township Manager, had no desire to see the Bon Air Fire Company taken out of service. Harford Township Board of Commissioners and its administration has a duty to provide fire, police, paramedic, and emergency response services to keep our residents as safe as possible. The decision to take Bon Air out of service was not made hastily or lightly. We received assurances from the Police Department and the Fire Chiefs from the other four fire companies at Bon Air's territory would be served safely. With the Manoa Fire Company less than one mile away from the Bon Air Fire Station, Board of Commissioners and Township Manager believed and relied on this assessment. The Bon Air Fire Company receives significant public support from Harford Township, including direct funding, the use of township-owned firefighting apparatus, vehicle maintenance, fuel, insurance, and permission to wear uniforms, that they are authorized to act on behalf of Harford Township. The Bon Air Fire Company must adhere to the standards and policies of Harford Township. The Volunteers Association with a hate group cast doubt on the volunteers' ability to serve all persons equally. The Township has a compelling interest in ensuring all residents receive or believe they will receive equal benefits of taxpayer dollars, particularly when it comes to public safety. Every person will receive help when needed. Harford Township prides itself on being a diverse and welcoming community. To help support those values, the Board of Commissioners adopted an anti-discrimination policy, ordered in December 26, 26, Chapter 183, in February of 2011. Adherence to the Township's anti-discrimination policy is required under the law, and it is the duty and responsibility of each Commissioner to ensure that the laws of this Township are enforced. When the Fire Company Board failed to take action, this raised even greater concern about the Fire Company. The inaction of the Fire Company Board placed the entire organization in violation of Township policies. At the same time, we also have the duty and responsibility to make sure that the First Amendment rights, namely freedom of association and speech, are protected. In considering the entirety of the situation, the Township balanced the individual's First Amendment rights with its compelling interest in ensuring all individuals receive equal benefits of taxpayer dollars regardless of race, color, religious creed, ancestry, age, sex, national origin, handicap or disability, sexual orientation, gender identity or gender expression. Today, the Bon Air Fire Company released a statement admitting that it made mistakes in the process, has agreed to accept the firefighter's resignation, and to require the entire Bon Air Fire Company Board and firefighters undergo sensitivity training. In addition, it is examining its bylaws and promising to reconstitute its Board to, quote, "be more inclusive of members of the local community whose background and expertise will lead the Fire Company into the future," unquote. These positive actions by the Bon Air Fire Board of Directors reflect a Board willing to take responsibility for their actions and the poor judgment previously shown. The fire trucks and apparatus will be returned to Bon Air, and Bon Air will be recertified to provide firefighting service as soon as our Township Manager so recommends to this Board. In this matter, their 103-year-old tradition of serving the public can continue. The Board of Commissioners has a duty to ensure there is no doubt that all Township's staff and all persons authorized to act on behalf of the Township will protect all individuals. That is our promise to you. That concludes my statement. If there's anybody, I would take a five-minute recess if anybody wants to clear the room. If you're here for that purpose, the press wants to leave unless they want to stick around for another, for a two-hour meeting. You can exit if you'd like. Otherwise, we'll continue with the agenda. So we turn it back to the agenda. Agenda item number three is the Commissioner Committee Updates. Are there any Commissioner Committee Updates?
Mr. President, just to let you know that budgets are underway. So from the Finance Committee side, we expect everything to happen on time and by October 31, 2019, for each member of this Board to have a copy of the 2020 budget.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner Committee Updates? Okay. Agenda item number four is the Township Auditor Update. Ross Anderson.
I reviewed the expenditures and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction. And I can tell you what, for the fourth quarter, it's having been a big sigh of relief on Sunday. Phew, go Birds.
Thank you, Ross. Agenda item number five is the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes allotted for registered speakers. Each has three minutes to speak, and we have seven registered speakers this evening. And we also have 20 minutes allotted for anyone that would like to speak in the audience on any agenda item, again, limited to three minutes. So, and then we also have an opportunity to continue the Citizens Forum, where anyone can speak on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, under Agenda Item Number 22, which is a continuation of our Citizens Forum. So, first registered speaker this evening is Richard McFadden.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard McFadden, and I live at 420 Lenark Avenue. We, the residents on Lenark Avenue, are here tonight to start a dialogue with the Township Commissioners to clarify our concerns regarding the challenges that will be encountered by our unique section of the Pennsy Trail, and our wishes to be involved in the planning of this particular section of the trail that will directly affect us, the neighbors and families residing at 420, 422, 424, 426, 428, 430, 432, 434, Lenark Avenue, and including 39 West Langhorne Avenue. We believe there are four things that make the development of our section of the Pennsy Trail from other sections of the trail unique. One, our section of the Pennsy Trail will travel between our backyard easement and a large unsightly commercial-zoned rental retail park area. This really looks like a sidewalk just next to a parking lot. Two, a vital green space that blocks views and sounds and smells of a C-5-zoned area is in danger because where the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, the DVRPC, currently has a future trail scheduled for development. Three, there's a serious liability concern with, since a new trail will run parallel or even perhaps directly against our alley or easement. Due to the limited space, privately-owned vehicles, garages, and other issues of liability should be addressed. Four, unlike the northern homes on northwest side of the Pennsy Trail, our homes have much smaller backyards and will be significantly closer to the future sights and sounds of the trail, severely affecting our private, close-knit community space. We, the residents of Lenark Avenue, have had contact with our Commissioner to address these concerns since July, and, excuse me, June, and we're bringing this to the Commissioners' meetings tonight. We're here today to request to be involved in a particular section of the Pennsy Trail and to request that the Township help us in the unique challenges our section presents. We request that a beautiful trail that enhances the green space behind our homes. We request to keep trees and enhance the greenery that protects our families, children, from parking lot fumes, Westchester Pike traffic sounds, and challenging retail space. We would like more transparency and to be involved with decisions that affect our community. As you mentioned earlier about community, we're part of that community, neighborhood and our adjoining property that connects us with sections of the Pennsy Trail. And again, the Pennsy Trail without the green space is just nothing more than a sidewalk beside a parking lot, and we believe this would decrease our property value. A few of the neighbors within the Lenark Avenue residency would like to speak on the topics listed above and share correspondence and photos and graphs with you as well. And you all have those packets that we deliver to you before the start of this meeting. Thank you.
So, six of the seven registered speakers this evening are speaking all on the same subject, so we'll deal with all of them at the end, but on the final speaker. Next is Keith Alderman.
Blatterman.
I'm sorry.
Close enough. He's fine. Yeah, I got a few images to share. I was going to go through Image Deck One, but you guys have everything, and you can look at it later. I appreciate that. Page one of Image Deck One is just a glimpse of the amazing space of the Pennsy Trail above Manoa Road. It's beautiful, hands down, gorgeous space. We use it all the time. It heads the whole way up to the YMCA. There's a lot of trees. There's a lot of greenery around it. It's a large contrast to our area of the Pennsy Trail, which is coming in the next couple of years, we believe. They have an excessive green space. We do not. They have tons of trees. We have a limited area of trees. Our trees actually, it looks like a forest, but on the other side of that is a retail, commercially-zoned area. And right now, the Delaware Valley Planning Commission has their plan to go through those trees. We would like a plan that would take our concerns into account. If you look at the next section, I think this is from, excuse me, Image Deck Two, Page One, a bird's-eye view using Google Maps, you can see how close our easement is, our garages and our backyards will be to the green space and to the trail. And if we lose those trees, we'll be exposed to the fumes of the parking lot. The current retail area, the LA Fitness, is turning over, and we're expecting it to turn into a grocery store or something like that. So we really don't want to lose those trees, but we want to welcome the Pennsy Trail. Our original conversation with the Commissioner suggested using the easement as a possibility, and if we couldn't use our easement, our alleyway, that we would probably have to lose those trees. He also mentioned there were three other plans, but at this time, we haven't seen any other plans, but we are hoping that developers come forward, and there's some effort put into planning and sharing those plans with us. We want to enhance that green space. We want to protect those large trees. This is what the parking lot would look like. And as far as the Pennsy Trail, when you travel above Manoa Road, it's beautiful. If you get rid of the trees, it no longer is a trail. It becomes a sidewalk, basically. So we want to keep this green barrier. It's an obstacle to the parking lot. It's an obstacle from an entry point to the Pennsy Trail that would encourage loitering, garbage, car traffic from outside the neighborhood. We know from the Inquirer and from our Commissioner, there's a significant amount of grant money available for this section of the trail. We're hoping that some of this funding goes towards planning and, just to continue an open dialogue in the future months, that we can return and discuss possibilities for our section of the Pennsy Trail.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. Third registered speaker this evening is Diane McGoldrick.
Hi, I'm Diane McGoldrick. I live at 432 Lenark Avenue. I wanted to talk to you about how our neighbors at Lenark Avenue have been stewards of the green space. If you could see Image Deck Number Three, over the years, we have hauled away trash and cleaned up the green space behind our homes. There's a listing on Page One of Deck Three. Page Two of Deck Three has a list of improvements we, the neighbors, have made to the green space between us and the retail-zoned parking lot. Please peruse all the pictures in Image Deck Three to get a sense of the care we, our small community, have put into the green space for nearly two decades. We've cleaned up trash and other debris. We've planted new trees to replace old trees. We've mowed the area. We've made gardens and green spaces to enhance the wildlife around us. We would like the Township to consider maintaining our section of the Pennsy Trail and expand on the work we have done over the years with the same intentions we have had. One, beautify the space for health, well-being, and privacy. Number two, protect, enhance, and replace any missing trees. Number three, and maintain our large trees and green space that protect us from parking lot fumes and retail commotion and protect us from the sounds of Westchester Pike. And number four, keep people from walking through our parking lot and into the alley and into our backyards. We strongly believe the green space and trees blocking the parking lot and retail space greatly increase our property value and greatly increase the value of the section of the Pennsy Trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Next speaker is Stephanie Matzinger.
Good evening. I'm from 434 Lenark Avenue. I'm also a part of our Pennsy Trail Concerns. We are requesting protection from liability, especially since the trail has plans now to connect all the way to Philadelphia. We at Lenark have a very limited space for the Pennsy Trail, and liability is definitely a major concern for us. If you look at Image Deck Number Four, there's a couple of pictures that just kind of give you a sense of the trail space that kind of fall into our green space as well as the easement, and it shows how close the trail will be to our alley or easement. Again, our section of the trail is very unique because users will actually be close enough to walk on our garage, like where we park our cars, where we access our garages, how we access the back of our houses. Trail users can bike, run, and walk essentially on our property, and so we are nervous, again, about the liability. So we're asking you, what are the suggested plans by the Township to keep people off of our easement? Will there be a fence? Will there be a natural barrier? Or will the Township take responsibility for trail users, mishaps, and accidents that happen on our property? Will there be a collaborative trail plan or development options provided by the Township that can help protect us from this liability, since there will be an increased use of the trail, because it's going to connect all the way to the city at some point? We also expect that the far end of the Pennsy Trail will become Lenark and West Langhorne, and we, again, like, we expect an increase of trail users. So we are wondering, what information does the Township have on this? Are we going to have free permit parking? Because, again, people are going to want to park their car, and they're going to want to access the trail. Are we going to have waste containers to keep trash off of our community? We are also worried about retail users accessing the trail. So, again, from behind that little bit of a green space, there's going to be, we think, a supermarket, and so we are concerned about people being able to kind of cut through. We believe that having that open access to the Pennsy Trail from the parking lot would decrease our property value for multiple reasons. One, it would expose the view of the retail and parking lot. I mean, I'm a new homeowner in the area, and I can tell you this right now, we would not have bought our home if you could see the parking lot. Two, we're worried about loitering and trash. If you're allowing people to walk from that parking lot through the kind of the woods, we're going to expect trash and loitering. And we are also worried about the decrease in the privacy for the families that do live on that street. Again, our backyards bump right up into that alley and that easement. So overall, we're really excited for the extension of the trail, but we would like to have more transparency and to be involved with the decisions that affect our community, our adjoining property, and the liability that's going to occur with the increased use of the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Our fifth registered speaker this evening is Lauren Warner.
(Inaudible).
Thank you. Then, also, we have Julie Akmanian.
I'm sorry, Julie can't be here tonight. She has, she has some...
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we address, Commissioner Aliva, could you address this issue?
I can address this issue as well as, I would like Tim Denny to address this issue. To the residents of Lenark Avenue, an email was sent to everyone saying that we would have a meeting discussing all of your, all of your concerns in a special meeting here, along with our, we would have the Township Recreation Department, we would have our engineer here, and there would be plans on what would happen. That trail goes not just past behind your house, but it goes behind about 66 homes on Woodland Drive, which, which houses back right up to the trail. There is no separation. There is no alleyway between their homes. That trail is going to be, they're, they can walk out their backyards, or houses just as close to those things. So what we wanted to do is have, bring everybody together, answer all the questions together, so I don't have four or five meetings with, using our staff and wasting money with our engineer. We will deal with all those questions that you have. I'd be glad to, anytime you can call me, and we can discuss those at any time. So, we planned to discuss those, how, how we're going to separate the two, where the trail's going to go, and show those plans to everyone involved, the people on Woodland Drive, as well as the, as well as how you're affected. And then we can deal with the issues of how you feel about being so close to the parking lot. So, that being said, we plan to have a meeting, and that meeting will be specifically about this trail, this section of the trail, and you can ask me any question, and we will have everybody here who can answer any of your questions. Tim, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry. We can't go back and forth here, if you don't mind.
I understand, and I don't want to go back and forth, but we will look at everybody. Everybody's unique in every, you know, in every set, the houses on Woodland Drive are closer because they don't have a separation of a driveway. You have a driveway and then a green space.
I disagree.
You can disagree all you want, but the fact is that there's, there is, you have a driveway, you have your homes, your backyards, and then you have a driveway, then you have a green space, and then you're going to have the trail, because we're going to, the green space must, must be retained. So, that's what you have. The people on Woodland Drive have a fence, their backyard, their house, and the houses are closer to that trail than your houses are. So I just, and I don't want to argue, I really don't want to have an argument with you, I will discuss all of this at the meeting with everyone and every question that you have. And Dr. McFadden, I will answer. I promise you, that's my promise. But, little busy tonight with other stuff, so we want to, we want to just answer all your questions at those meetings.
You want, does Tim Denny have, Tim, do you have any dad?
Yeah, just to follow up on the Commissioner said, certainly your concerns are legitimate, and we want to address them all. Not only do we want to, but the terms of the grant require that we meet with the neighbors. We want it to be a collaborative effort. I think some, it's not unusual, your circumstances, on this side of the Pennsy Trail, I'm glad that you like it, believe it or not, the same kind of questions came up, almost word for word. We have planted over 150 trees along that trail, and we certainly intend to do the same, to create the buffer to address all your concerns before any work is done.
Do you have a timeframe when you believe?
I'm sorry, we can't go back and forth. If you want to, if you want to come on...
The Commissioner would like to do it later in the, in the fall, and I think that's legitimate. There were no constructions going to begin for a long time.
Thank you. Our final speaker under the Citizens Forum is Ann Phillips to talk about one of our great assets in this Township, Freedom Playground at Harford Reserve.
Can I just add something? Can I just add one thing? Richard, you can call me anytime, and we can talk, anytime.
Ann Phillips, so, here she is.
Hi, my name is Ann Phillips. I live at 2628 Wendy Road in Haverford Town. I'm here tonight to discuss Freedom Playground. We are nine years out now from when we opened, and we have been having annual maintenance days at Freedom Playground, and we are going to have another one this fall, on October 12th. I provided this information to both the Parks and Recs and to the Commissioners' Secretaries, for you to distribute as much as you can, please. Our event is going from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it's very simple, we're going to be vacuuming and painting and power washing the, the pressure-treated lumber beforehand and then sealing it. So we're looking for volunteers, hello, to come out and help us.
Take a good night.
In order to get that done, it's the one day of the year that we close down the playground for six hours in order to do beautification. I didn't introduce myself properly. I am the President of the Freedom Playground Committee, so myself, as well as, you know, 2,000 of our people, probably some of whom are here today, helped build the playground initially. So I want to thank all of our volunteers once again, and all of the Commissioners, and in particular to Tim Denny, who really does the real work of maintaining the playground, obviously, and then my committee that has remained together for all these years. So I'm very, very grateful to them. On our, on this flyer that I handed out to the Commissioners, and also on our website, is a link to the Sign Up Genius, so you can sign up, come out, give a two-hour shift. I will sign off on any volunteer hours that are needed for anyone, and, and we do need the help, so I appreciate anyone who could come out and help us. Okay? Thank you so much.
And thank you for your, your leadership over the years, and I know that this, this wonderful playground, all-accessible playground, wouldn't be there without your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
We now turn to the citizens, the portion of the agenda of the Citizens Forum, for anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item. It must be an agenda item, and then you have three minutes to speak. So, if anybody would like to speak on an agenda item, these, we can only entertain up to 20 minutes, so it's basically seven individuals. You also have the opportunity, when we continue the Citizens Forum under Agenda Item Number 22, anybody that hasn't had a chance to speak will have an opportunity to do so. At that point, we'll stay as long as, until every last person has had a chance to speak. Okay? Thank you. Just state your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Absolutely. My name's Anthony Weiss. I live at 2313 Belvedere Ave. I came tonight to the Bon Air Fire Company. When I read what had occurred with Bon Air, I was deeply concerned, but also very happy to live here at Harford Township, which has such a strong anti-discrimination policy, so strong that they went to such lengths to make sure that not only citizens were protected by a fire department that shared their same values, but also that they stood up and they said no to membership in a hate group, no to leadership that was questionable, no to leadership that did not match the same values of the Township of Harford. So I thank Mr. Berman for taking the stance and the risk of such a strong reaction to something that shook me and made me seriously question what was going on in that specific fire department, even though it doesn't serve me. It made me wonder what was happening in our Township, and I'm glad that the Township Commissioners went ahead and supported Mr. Berman in his decision to close down that fire department until the leadership was able to get together of that fire department and make sure that they went ahead and understood what the Township really believed in and also what its legal obligations were for. So, again, I thank the Township Commissioners for taking such a strong look at this and making sure that the Board went ahead and reconvened to make sure they met the Township obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. Guess there's a line, line for me. Barry.
Board members, my name is Justin Magna. I live at 2813 St. Mary's Road. I am a resident of Harford Township. I make a statement concerning the Board's decision to terminate the service of the Bon Air Volunteer Fire Company in response to their refusal to accept the resignation of Mr. Bruce McClay Jr. because of his past involvement with the Proud Boys. I have read the statement of the Board and the former statement of the Board. [end of transcript]
Aliva, could you address this issue?
I can address this issue as well as I would like Tim Denny to address this issue. To the residents of Lanark Avenue, an email was sent to everyone saying that we would have a meeting discussing all of your concerns in a special meeting here, along with our, we would have the Township Recreation Department, we would have our engineer here, and there would be plans on what would happen. That trail goes not just past behind your house, but it goes behind about 66 homes on Woodland Drive, which houses back right up to the trail. There is no separation, there is no alleyway between their homes. That trail is going to be, they can walk out their backyards or houses just as close to those things. So, what we wanted to do is have, bring everybody together, answer all the questions together, so I don't have four or five meetings with, using our staff and wasting money with our engineer. We will deal with all those questions that you have. I'd be glad to, anytime you can call me, and we can discuss those at any time. So, we planned to discuss those, how we're going to separate the two, where the trail's going to go, and show those plans to everyone involved, the people on Woodland Drive, as well as the, as well as how you're affected. And then we can deal with the issues of how you feel about being so close to the parking lot. So, that being said, we plan to have a meeting, and that meeting will be specifically about this trail, this section of the trail, and you can ask me any question, and we will have everybody here who can answer any of your questions. Tim, would you like to speak?
I'm sorry.
We can't go back and forth here, if you don't mind.
I understand, and I don't want to go back and forth, but we will look at everybody. Everybody's unique, and every, you know, and every said, the houses on Woodland Drive are closer because they don't have a separation of a driveway. You have a driveway, and then a green space.
I disagree.
You can disagree all you want, but the fact is that there's, there is, you have a driveway, you have your homes, your backyards, and then you have a driveway, then you have a green space, and then you're going to have the trail, because we're going to, the green space must be retained. So, that's what you have. The people on Woodland Drive have a fence, their backyard, their house, and the houses are closer to that trail than your houses are. So, I just, and I don't want to argue, I really don't want to have an argument with you, I will discuss all of this at the meeting with everyone, and every question that you have, and Dr. McFadden, I will answer. I promise you, that's my promise. But, little busy tonight with other stuff, so we want to, we want to just answer all your questions at those meetings.
You want, does Tim Denny have, Tim, do you have any dad?
Yeah, just a follow-up one. The Commissioner said the, certainly your concerns are legitimate, and we want to address them all. Not only do we want to, but the terms of the grant require that we meet with the neighbors. We want it to be a collaborative effort. I think some, it's not unusual, your circumstances, on this side of the Penzi Trail, I'm glad that you like it, believe it or not, the same kind of questions came up, almost word for word. We have planted over 150 trees along that trail, and we certainly intend to do the same, to create the buffer, to address all your concerns before any work is done.
Do you have a timeframe when you believe?
I'm sorry, we can't go back and forth. If you want to, if you want to come on.
The Commissioner would like to do it later in the, in the fall, and I think that's a legitimate, there were no constructions going to begin for a long time.
Alrighty.
Thank you. Our final speaker under the Citizens Forum is Ann Phillips, to talk about one of our great assets in this township, Freedom Playground at Haverford Reserve.
Can I just add something? Can I just add one thing? Richard, you can call me anytime, and we can talk, anytime.
Ann Phillips, so, here she is.
Hi, my name is Ann Phillips, I live at 2628 Wendy Road in Haverford Town. I'm here tonight to discuss Freedom Playground. We are nine years out now from when we opened, and we have been having annual maintenance days at Freedom Playground, and we are going to have another one this fall, on October 12th. I provided this information to both the Parks and Recs, and to the Commissioners' Secretaries, for you to distribute as much as you can, please. Our event is going from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and it's very simple, we're going to be vacuuming, and painting, and power washing the pressure-treated lumber beforehand, and then sealing it. So, we're looking for volunteers, hello, to come out and help us.
Take a good night.
In order to get that done, it's the one day of the year that we close down the playground for six hours in order to do beautification. I didn't introduce myself properly. I am the President of the Freedom Playground Committee, so myself, as well as, you know, 2,000 of our people, probably some of whom are here today, helped build the playground initially. So, I want to thank all of our volunteers once again, and all of the Commissioners, and in particular to Tim Denny, who really does the real work of maintaining the playground, obviously, and then my committee that has remained together for all these years, so I'm very, very grateful to them. On our, on this flyer that I handed out to the Commissioners, and also on our website, is a link to the Sign Up Genius, so you can sign up, come out, give a two-hour shift. I will sign off on any volunteer hours that are needed for anyone, and we do need the help, so I appreciate anyone who could come out and help us, okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ann, thank you for your leadership over the years, and I know that this wonderful playground, all-accessible playground, wouldn't be there without your leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
We now turn to the citizens, the portion of the citizens forum, for anyone that would like to speak on an agenda item. It must be an agenda item, and then you have three minutes to speak. So, if anybody would like to speak on an agenda item, these, we can only entertain up to 20 minutes, so it's basically seven individuals. You also have the opportunity, when we continue the Citizens Forum under Agenda Item Number 22, anybody that hasn't had a chance to speak will have an opportunity to do so. At that point, we'll stay as long as, tell every last person that had a chance to speak, okay? Thank you. Just state your name and your address, and try to limit your comments to three minutes.
Absolutely. My name's Anthony Weiss, I live at 2313 Belvedere Ave. I came tonight to the Bon Air Fire Company. When I read what had occurred with Bon Air, I was deeply concerned, but also very happy to live here at Haverford Township, which has such a strong anti-discrimination policy, so strong that they went to such lengths to make sure that not only citizens were protected by a fire department that shared their same values, but also that they stood up and they said no to membership in a hate group, no to leadership that was questionable, no to leadership that did not match the same values of the Township of Haverford. So, I thank Mr. Berman for taking the stance and the risk of such a strong reaction to something that shook me, and made me seriously question what was going on in that specific fire department, even though it doesn't serve me. It made me wonder what was happening in our township, and I'm glad that the Township Commissioners went ahead and supported Mr. Berman in his decision to close down that fire department until the leadership was able to get together of that fire department, and make sure that they went ahead and understood what the township really believed in, and also what its legal obligations were for. So, again, I thank the Township Commissioners for taking such a strong look at this, and making sure that the Board went ahead and reconvened to make sure they met the township obligations. Thank you.
Thank you, great comments. Guess there's a line, line for me.
Board members, my name is Justin Magna, I live at 2813 St. Mary's Road, I am a resident of Haverford Township. I make a statement concerning the Board's decision to terminate the service of the Bon Air Volunteer Fire Company in response to their refusal to accept the resignation of Mr. Bruce McClay Jr. because of his past involvement with the Proud Boys. I have read the statement of the Board and the former statement of the fire company regarding the matter, and I have investigated the ideological persuasions of the Proud Boys. Through my research, I have found the accusations that the Proud Boys are white supremacist, neo-fascist extremist group to be false exaggerations made by their ideological opponents. While I myself am a liberal and disagree with the persuasions of the Proud Boys, by my liberal values, I support their right to hold views different from my own, as is the right of every individual in a free society. When I heard of this matter, I thought you wanted the resignation of Mr. McClay because of his current membership in the Proud Boys. I learned in the company's former statement that Mr. McClay, quote, "ultimately decided after he learned more about the group's beliefs that he did not wish to become part of the organization, and he disassociated himself from the group more than one year ago," end quote. You admit you knew Mr. McClay had already disassociated himself from the Proud Boys because you said in your statement that Mr. McClay, quote, "indicated that he had attempted to distance himself from the group in recent months," end quote. In other words, you sought to dismiss Mr. McClay, not because he is or was a member of the Proud Boys, but because he once considered becoming a member. In short, you sought his resignation because in your view, he committed a thought crime. When the fire company refused your demand, when the fire company refused their, your demand to dismiss Mr. McClay for his thought crime, you in turn punished the fire company. I am disappointed that the fire company is now bending the knee to your attempts at forcing this resignation. Reclaiming my time, thank you. You then justify your punishment of the fire company by saying their refusal of your demand, quote, "conflicts with the public policy of Haverford Township, which includes ensuring that all persons are treated fairly and equally, and that all persons enjoy the full benefits of citizenship," end quote. You hypocrites! Your own words condemn your actions. Among the benefits of American citizenship are the rights to freedom of thought, belief, and association. So, why did you not afford to Mr. McClay the freedom of thought to consider Proud Boys' persuasions for himself? The freedom of belief to decide whether or not he believes Proud Boys' persuasions are good or bad? The freedom of association to decide whether or not he will associate with the Proud Boys? You have not treated him fairly or equally, you have denied him the benefits of citizenship. What you have done is both un-American and contemptible. What's worse, not only did you pursue thought tyranny over Mr. McClay, but you were willing to make our community suffer loss because of it. In the closing of the fire company, you removed 37 firefighters from our service. The fact that other companies will still cover our township is irrelevant, since the reduction of fire suppression capacity at all is a loss for our community. We are the ones who suffer under your bid for thought tyranny. Come to your senses and make right what you have wrongly done. Reinstate Mr. McClay to the Bon Air Fire Company, and allow the company to resume its service. If you refuse, know this, leaders who punish citizens for thought crimes are not the leaders who should preside over our community, or any American community, and if you refuse, you can be certain that I, for one, will support your replacement on this board by leaders who are more worthy. Thank you.
Excuse me, there's a line. Excuse me, there's a line, Mr. Holmes, there was a line. Mr. Lewis, there was a line.
There was a line, I'm sorry, there was a line.
But, I can't stand in line.
There's a line, man. Here's a line, right there, man.
She can't, I'm sorry, well, we'll, we'll recognize you, I'm sorry, sorry.
Gentlemen, thank you, my name is Robert Doe, I live at 5057 Brittany Lane, and I'm not an educated man. I don't come here with a great vocabulary, I don't come here with a deep background of law. What I do know is I have a love and fealty of the Constitution, and I have a love and fealty toward transparency. There's a few things I'd like to know, you can, of course you won't answer it, we'd like to know how this was brought about, we know this was an Antifa dox of a young man who served his community for six years, had not one, one instance of denying anybody their rights, not one instance of acting in a manner that would make him a harm to the township, not one instance of not getting somewhere because of who someone was. And Mr. Holmes, and Mr. Siegel, the last meeting, I watched you sit when they were talking about the library, and you guys both said, hey, we have to follow constitutional rights, we have to follow what people did. That man, that gentleman, Bruce McClay, I coached him in high school, there's not a racist bone in that young man's body, not one. His brother was murdered at a CVS in Chester, defending his coworkers. He's had a rough life, and through it all, for six years, he faithfully and dedicatedly served his community. It's not funny, Mr. Holmes, you know, I just don't appreciate getting laughed at when I'm trying to make, you had a huge grin on your face. So, anyway, you talked about that, and in this instance, Mr. Holmes, in this instance, Mr. Holmes, I want to know where those rights were transferred to Lieutenant McClay. Did he ever, ever, was there ever an accusation? Was he afforded a counseling session when this came to light? If somebody was an alcoholic or an addict, would there be a counseling session? Would you seek young, would you seek help for that young man? Did any of that occur? He was never a member of that organization. He made the right move to walk away, and this is what it's come to, this is what it is. He never did anything wrong. I have never heard more hate come out of a township than I've heard in the past five days. There's been torches and pitchforks running through this town, like this guy was the second coming of Adolf Hitler. And what you've done to that young man is you've let that fester. And I have one last question, maybe it's legal, maybe it's not, was law enforcement used to investigate a man who was not accused of a crime, or suspected of any crime? And if it was, we'd like to know how that comes about, and what document was used to force his resignation in lieu of termination? And police investigation of somebody not accused of a crime, not suspected of a crime? This has torn this town apart, and I'm heartbroken. There's good people in this town, this is the most polarized I've ever seen it. If this had been done transparently, out in the open, instead of this statement, this kid is getting killed, he's got, he can't even come out, there's Antifa guys doxing him all over, people on the internet, you want to see it, I'll show it to you. I've had people talk to me, I've got little things, backhanded threats to me, and if you stand against it, all of a sudden you're a racist and a bigot. I'll knock somebody out, I see mistreating somebody racially, and then Mr. Haley can come lock me up. But, just because you disagree, doesn't mean you're a racist. It's a hate-filled time, and what you've done is you stoked the fire. And if that man isn't reinstated, we've lost our way. That's all I got to say.
Gentlemen, good evening, I'll be very brief. My name is Christine Flowers, I have lived in this township since December 23rd, 1969. I grew up here, I live here, I love this town. I have never before come to a meeting of Commissioners, because I never had to, because I felt comfortable and at home and welcomed in my community. I, as the two gentlemen before me stated far more eloquently than I can or will, this town has now turned into that old movie, A Town Without Pity. It is a town that has essentially used the full force of its power against an individual who has never been convicted of any crime, never been arrested for any crime, who simply chose to investigate a group, whether you agree with the principles of that hate group or not. It was his constitutional right to go and investigate, as it was his constitutional right to say, I do not believe in the principles espoused by these individuals, I'm not going to follow through. When some cowardly Antifa, that should be called Pro-Tifa, Antifa means against fascism, Antifa is in favor of fascism, they are Pro-Tifa. When some individual from an organization that cropped up because of political differences, ratted out, an individual who went to a couple of meetings, was given more respect and attention by these Commissioners than an individual who, like my brother Ted Flowers, spent two decades volunteering his time at the Lanark Fire Company, putting his life on the line for the residents of this town, when that young man was essentially turned into a, I can't even think of the word right now, but a leper in the city that he, in this town that he served. I no longer recognize Haverford Township, Haverford, Haverford Town, I do not recognize my home. And one last question, gentlemen, will you please provide a list of all of the organizations to which you belong, all of the meetings you attended, all of the photographs taken of you at any point in your life? I hope you've led stellar, virtuous lives, because most of us have not, but most of us have not done what this young man did, provide service on the front line. Do you know my brother saved someone's life giving CPR? Didn't get a dime for that. The only thing he got back was the knowledge that he saved a life in a town that he loved. I am ashamed, for the first time in my life, to live in this town. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Joe Malani, I live at 1310 Annabella Avenue. I can't really top what the previous three gentlemen and lady said, because I agree with everything. I am ashamed of what you guys did. It is, what we are witnessing here is the tyranny of government. You bullied Bon Air into succumbing to political correctness. It makes me ashamed, I don't, I don't know what to say anymore. I agree with Ms. Flowers, I would like to see now, is every worker in this township, every volunteer, going to be investigated into what organizations they're involved in? And who determines, who determines what these, what these groups are, if they're a hate group or not a hate group? It's ridiculous, all this. It makes me ashamed, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, excuse me one second, sir, sir. She's unable to stand in line, so I'm going to take her first, then we'll take you next, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Michelle Alvarez, 134 Hastings Avenue. I am here to support having a new library built on Brookline Boulevard property, and maintaining part of the property as a park, so that we can have a playground remain in that neighborhood. I'm on the parks board, as most of you know, and I'm concerned that we will be able to serve both needs. I know that the library's in desperate need of bigger space, I know Brookline provides bigger space and a lot more parking, so I hope in your decisions tonight, that we are going to look at the most feasible, economically feasible way to do both on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Time for two more speakers, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name's Jim Doherty, I live at 216 North Bellfield Avenue. I detest politics, I'm not even going to get in on the political end of this. The one thing I do know is, as elected officials, your number one job is the safety of the community, and you failed, you know? I don't care what you say, Manoa can cover and all that, you know what? Fire can happen more than one place at the same time, okay? So, thank God nothing happened, but my family is directly affected by the closing of this firehouse. God forbid something happened, and 30 seconds could cost a life, okay? A half mile can take more than 30 seconds at rush hour, okay? So, you know what? Everyone who voted to close should resign immediately, because you failed your constituency. You did, okay? It's that simple. Safety first. I don't care about political agendas and all that crap, but you guys, you know, you really need to take a good, hard look, and you need to get this firehouse open tonight, not next week, tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Marsh Brunelli, I live at 2323 Darby Road, Eagle Tarrows Apartment in Haverford Town. In light of the recent development of the Bon Air Fire Company that was stated by the Commissioners, I still would like to read my public statement, because it includes some basic principles, I think, I would like to share. Regarding the closing of the Bon Air Fire Company, I think there's a basic question at the heart of the issue. Whose rights are we going to defend here? Back on June 15th, the Haverford Township defended the rights of a drag queen to read to vulnerable children. The drag queen didn't disavow his actions that caused gender confusion to these small babes, but this was okay with Haverford Township officials. Now, today, a fireman who disconnected himself from a controversial group called Proud Boys resigned, and because the fire company wouldn't accept his resignation, Township officials shut down the entire Bon Air Fire Company, took away their equipment, and our township lost 37 valuable firemen who have made outstanding contributions to our community. What's dangerous is the group think that has occurred here. When the fireman became aware of the activities that were a part of the Proud Boys, he disavowed and disconnected himself from this group. The Township official's punishment was severe, and had a domino effect. Many in the news media and others tend to use the Southern Poverty Law Center as a source for information. It is not a credible source. In 2017, the Pentagon stopped using SPLC in its training manuals, the FBI has stopped using SPLC because of its unreliability. It targets innocent people and groups, and the SPLC uses faulty research. The Washington Post reported that a former Islamic radical, Majid Nawawi, was paid a $375 million settlement from the SPLC, because they falsely accused them in their guide to anti-Muslim extremists. SPLC issued a public apology. Nawawi now advises British politicians how to fight radical Muslim extremists and anti-Muslim extremism. Do I condone the Proud Boys? Absolutely not. They are not choirboys singing on a Sunday morning service. However, it is very disconcerting to witness the punishment of a fireman who has rejected the Proud Boys, and who has connected from this group. This was his former past actions. Is there no place for redemption for this gentleman? What's worse is that the Township official shut down an entire fire company and endangered the resident's safety, and this will put a burden on our other fire companies. This decision was hasty, rash, and overreaching. Thank you, gentlemen.
Alright, good evening, my name's Eric Horst, I live at 317 North Minowa Road in Haverford, Pennsylvania. Over the weekend, I circulated a statement in support of this Board's initial decision to suspend Bon Air Fire Company. That statement has received over 500 signatures, primarily from right here in Haverford Township, as well as from outside the surrounding communities as well. Before I read the statement, I just want to say I can't speak on behalf of every person who signed the statement, but I believe that nobody that signed the statement wanted to see Bon Air Fire Company be closed permanently, after 100 years of distinguished service to the community. We're very heartened by the statement that they released earlier today, acknowledging their error, reversing their previous decision, and committing to taking concrete steps in order to address the situation that was caused by their failure to act previously. And with regards to the volunteer himself, I also don't believe that this volunteer needs to be defined by the worst decision of his life. I believe, I'm heartened by the fact that it appears that he made an offer to resign, which says to me that he initially, that he grasped the severity and the gravity of his mistake, and I hope that he'll continue to try to engage with the community constructively, reach out, and possibly, you know, help others in our community to avoid the dangers espoused by groups that espouse violent ideologies such as white supremacy, white nationalism, and other extremism.
Please, please, please respect his right to speak.
So, again, we, I just want to read an abridged version of the statement that was signed, and again, in light of Bon Air's positive steps that they've taken, and the statement reads as follows, "We, the undersigned residents of Haverford Township PA and the surrounding community, commend the Haverford Township Manager and Board of Commissioners for their unanimous initial decision to suspend the Bon Air Fire Company. Organizations that provide emergency services to the public must do so on a non-discriminatory basis, regardless of race, national origin, gender identity, sexual orientation, and religion." In a world where elected In a world where elected officials often choose to take the path of least resistance rather than making tough decisions on behalf of their constituents, Haverford Township's decision stands out as a model of courage and commitment to the principle of equality before the law." We are proud to have township leadership that is working on behalf of all of its constituents, and we are grateful to the township manager and the Board of Commissioners for taking its commitment to the public seriously and standing up for our community and our values. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I'm sorry, this concludes the... I'm sorry, sir. This concludes our Citizens Forum. Sir, you're going to have to wait until Agenda Item Number 23, the continuation of the Citizens Forum. We have 20 minutes allotted for this portion, so you have an opportunity. What's that?
I have a very brief...
Okay, okay. You have a minute. Go ahead. Go ahead. You have two minutes. He's the last speaker, and then anybody else wants to speak, speak under Agenda Item Number 23.
I could have been done by now. My name is Tony Morinelli. I'm restoring Hartford Hall on 570 Mill Road. I do not mean to diminish the gravity of what has been going on, but the preservation of the Brookline School is equally important. I would simply like to know is, how is it logically possible to have Agenda Number 15, which calls for the demolition of the school, precede the Resolution Number 16, which determines where the library is going to go, when one of those possibilities theoretically, and we know this is already a done deal, is the Brookline School, or at least the area of the Brookline School? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So everyone, you'll have an opportunity shortly. As we get through the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time, under Agenda Item Number 23. So we'll continue with our agenda this evening with the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 12, 2019.
Chairman.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 12, 2019.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Minutes approved 9-0. Agenda Item Number 7, approval of the warrants. Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move we approve... Sorry, I just got to get this on the screen. Mr. President, I move that we approve warrant number 9 of 2019 totaling $3,314,037.33, comprising the general sewer fund payroll for August 22, 2019, the amount of $678,6743... I'm sorry. $67.96. The general sewer fund payroll for September 5, 2019, in the amount of $628,161.70. General fund dispersments, number 9 of 2019, in the amount of $1,299,323.07. Sewer fund dispersment, number 9 of 2019, in the amount of $505,481.03. Community Development Block Grant Fund dispersment, number 9 of 2019, in the amount of $67,485.30. Capital Project Fund dispersment, number 9 of 2019, in the amount of $128,241.03. Hostage meter refill, in the amount of $3,000. A credit card statement ending August 27, 2019, in the amount of $4,277.34.
Moved by Commissioner Holmes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Siegel.
Mr. President.
Any discussion or question?
Mr. President, our township auditor has reviewed these warrants and the individual items therein. Any questions that he raised were answered to his satisfaction by township staff. He recommends these be approved, as do I.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the warrant? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Warrants approved 9-0. For the benefit of the public, Agenda Items Number 8 through 21 have been discussed last week in our work session, so they've been discussed and debated. So this portion of the agenda should move rather quickly unless there's additional debate or questions that are raised by any member of the Board of Commissioners. So now I'll turn to Agenda Item Number 8, which is the 2020 minimum municipal obligation.
Mr. President, I admire your optimism about all of these items, but this one, I move we accept and certify the 2020 minimum municipal pension obligations for the police and the non-uniform defined benefit plans and the non-uniform defined contribution plans.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. By Commissioner Holmes.
Mr. President, this was talked about last week and significantly explained by our finance director. This is the... This exercise is our annual certification as to what is the minimum obligation we must pay into our plans per our statutory obligations to keep the plans solvent. That number is published and provided to the state, as has been our practice for at least as long as I've been on this board. That sets the statutory minimum, but we pay more into that so that our plans now are much higher than the average plans in Pennsylvania in terms of solvency, and just continues our efforts to be very conservative with regard to our valuation of our plans and to be very careful in maintaining the solvency of them.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 9, Ordinance Number P15-2019, Grange Estate Extend Lease in Agreement Between Haverford Township and the Friends of the Grange, Second Reading. Commissioner...
Ordinance Number P15-2019, Grange Estate, to extend the lease in agreement between Haverford Township and the Friends of the Grange Incorporated, Second Reading.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion or questions?
Motion to adopt the Second Reading of Ordinance P15-2019 approving the extent lease in agreement between Haverford Township and Friends of the Grange Incorporated for the property leasing, maintenance, and preservation of the Grange complex.
Second it again.
Okay. Is that seconded by Commissioner Hart?
Yep.
Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 10, Ordinance Number P16-2019, Trail Easement Agreement, 3823 Darby Road, Second Reading.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt the Second Reading of Ordinance P16-2019 authorizing the township to enter an easement agreement for portions of the property located at 3823 Darby Road for the establishment of trail facilities.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner McCluskey. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 11, Ordinance Number P17-2019, Traffic First Reading. Since this is in the fifth ward, I'd ask somebody to do this on my behalf.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the First Reading of Ordinance P17-2019 rescinding a traffic restriction on the following highway, rescinding from Section 175-92 Schedule 17, parking of commercial vehicles prohibited at all times, Moreland Avenue, both sides from Lee Circle to Doe Road.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Any discussion or questions? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 12, P... Ordinance Number P18-2019, Smoking in Parks, First Reading.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt the First Reading of Ordinance P18-2019 prohibiting the use of tobacco in recreational areas, parks, and playgrounds, providing penalties for violation thereof.
Second.
Commissioner.
Okay.
Seconded by Commissioner Siegel. I'm sorry. Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, I'd like to table this. I'd like to have the park board take a look at this prior to us going ahead and reading it. So I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Moved to table by Commissioner Aliva. Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett. Please call a roll on the motion to table.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
No.
Mr. Siegel.
No.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. This is table. Resolution Number 13... Agenda Item Number 13, Resolution 2151-2019, Assault Rifles Resolution.
Mr. President.
Mr. Siegel.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2151-2019 that Haverford Township's Board of Commissioners strongly supports preenactment of the federal assault weapons legislation, placing a ban on both assault weapons and assault weapon ammunition. Resolve that the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners strongly support legislation which would require a permit for the purchase, acquisition, or possession of ammunition and place certain prohibitions on the sale of ammunition and would place ban on assault weapon ammunition. Resolve that the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners believes every person who purchases a gun should pass a universal background check with the elimination of all loopholes. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford calls on the President of the United States and the United States Congress to take prompt action in advancing common sense gun research.
Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Please call a roll.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 14, Resolution 2152-2019, Amendment to the Consolidated Fee Schedule, Cable and Telecommunication Administrative Fee.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt Resolution 2152-2019, Amending Resolution Number 2140-2019, the Consolidated Fee Schedule, adopting the following revision to the Consolidated Fee Schedule by establishing utility and cable provider administrative fee in the amount of $1,000 for each instance in which wires excessively hang, cause a ground pile, or are otherwise subject to human interaction. The fee will be reassessed every 30 days in which utility or cable service provider fails to address the hazard.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Hart. Any questions or discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I believe we talked during the work session where Kelly from Mr. Burns' office was going to look into this. I would understand if, given some other factors, it was not looked into, but we were... I think the question was whether, under the FEC, FCC, or any of the federal authorities, whether we had the right to pass this legislation, and I don't know if we can vote on it unless we have that opinion.
Yeah, I'm sorry to tell you that due to some other factors and other research we had to do this week, there was not enough time to get to that, so...
So... Entertaining motion to table?
Table it, given... It's not that I don't necessarily agree with it or not. I just don't want us to pass something unless we're... At least we have the assurances from our solicitor that it's...
I'll second that.
Moved to table. Seconded by Commissioner Aliva. Please call a roll on the motion to table.
Mr. D'Amelio.
Yes.
Mr. Aliva.
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey.
Yes.
Mr. Siegel.
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett.
Yes.
Dr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Wexler.
Yes.
Mr. Holmes.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 15, Resolution 2153-2019, Authorizing Township Manager and Engineer to Obtain Proposals for Demolition of the Brookline School.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2153-2019, Authorizing the Township Manager, in conjunction with the Township Engineer, to take all steps necessary to obtain proposals for demolition of the Brookline School, and directs the Township Manager to take such steps as necessary to effectuate this resolution.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. President.
Seconded by who? Seconded by who? Commissioner Wexler. I'm sorry. Any discussion or question?
...by what this resolution is. It's a resolute... It is not a resolution authorizing the demolition of the Brookline School. It's simply a resolution that we would get a proposal on the cost of demolition of the Brookline School. I would also ask that, since the following resolution involves looking at the library and exploring renovation versus building a new resolution, that we refrain from voting on... Any vote on demolition of the Brookline School until we've had further public meeting, which would include proposals for the library.
I would second that.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Assuming we pass the second of the two resolutions, since they are essentially related, I would anticipate the property committee will have the information that Dr. Hart seeks either by our meeting, which I believe is October 7, the work session, or the regular meeting in October, so that we can report to this board as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Discussion?
Jerry, when would you like to have this public meeting with public comment?
I think as soon as we can get all the information on the... Well, get the proposal back on what demolition costs are, but also a hard fact on the library, on a plan, on costs of a new library versus renovating the library at the current site. So if we can do that by next month, that would be great. I don't want to move forward with any move to demolish the building until we look at all the options that we have out there.
Agreed.
Andy, that was my question. Jerry answered the question because it's not to take the building down, it's to find out the cost of taking the building down. So that's good. Okay.
Any other questions? Discussion?
Yeah, I just want to lighten the mood and tell everybody that I had the distinct experience this week of earlier in the week becoming a fascist because of my views about the Brookline School, and later in the week being called a commie because of what I did with Bon Air. I was fairly obvious about my thoughts on the demolition of the Brookline School. I do appreciate that this... That there is a series of steps that must be taken by us before any wrecking ball would hit anything there, and I encourage my colleagues to take advantage of those. I listened to what people talked about last week. I've listened for weeks and for months, the different viewpoints of this. I believe our township took on this property, took it from the school district, specifically with the purpose of using it for a public purpose. I think we have received enough information to know that this is not a building in its current configuration that we want to keep, and the information that I have so far is that this is not a building that would be at all efficient for us to renovate and use in its... In any facsimile of its current configuration. So I vote for this resolution. I plan on voting yes for this resolution, but I certainly understand that there are numerous steps township needs to take before any demolition contract is actually awarded or anything would happen, and I will certainly not discourage the continued gathering of information, and I will not shut my ears or eyes or my mind to anything that anybody has to say.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Happy that we're going to have another meeting regarding the subject. As everyone knows, I've asked for additional meetings, and I'm glad this meeting is going to take place, so I will be...
Well, let, we, we haven't decided where the, I, we can do a first meeting as part of a work session if all of the information is available, and then decide from there if we need to do further meetings from there.
As soon as I verify with the rel- the relative people, I will let the board know that we believe it can be presented, hopefully either at October seven or the October fourteen, one of our meetings, uh, so that the board has all the information. That's my goal.
Well, good, I mean, as soon as you know, I, I'd like to send an email to the rep, 'cause ma- even residents in my ward are interested in this building, so, be nice if they have an opportunity to attend the meeting.
It's an important issue for this township.
Absolutely, thank you.
Do we have any, uh, we have any idea of how long it, it will take to get proposals for the demolition of this building? Township is here.
By proposals, what the, where the township receives quotes to demolish a public building is through the public bidding process. So those bids have to be prepared, put on the street, advertised for a minimum of twice, and then publicly opened. That will be at least sixty days, most likely ninety days.
That's obviously very helpful information purposes of the public to understand it's more opportunity for them to comment, um, and, um, more opportunities for the, for us to hold these meetings.
I do think, Dan, now if you, if we have the information on the library, that we could at least present that at the next work session, that would move things around.
That's my goal.
Right.
The sooner we have information, the sooner I will make sure it's available.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item, uh, agenda item number sixteen, resolution twenty-one fifty-four, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing township manager, property committee, and engineer to determine comparative costs of either building a new library or event renovating the existing library on Mill Road.
Mr. President? Motion to adopt resolution twenty-one fifty-four dash twenty nineteen that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Haverford hereby authorizes township manager in conjunction with the Township Property Committee and Township Engineer as necessary to hire consultants to determine the comparative cost of building a new library at either the current location or the Brookline School site, or renovating the existing library, and to provide such information as expeditiously as possible, and directs the property committee to take such steps as necessary to effectuate this resolution.
Second.
Goodbye, Mr. McGarrett. Uh, the only thing I would add, and I brought this up at the work session, is that I think, um, as we define renovation of the existing library, I think part of that definition should include the analysis of possibly keeping part of the existing library and building new as well. I understand there's opportunities to possibly do that, so I think that's a, a third option that we, uh, this board needs to consider before making any final, final decision, so I would, so I would just urge that that renovating mean also considering a combination renovating existing and also building new.
I thought we had incorporated that by saying-
Did we?
But of course, building a new library at either the current location or the Brookline School site.
You're comfortable, so that's, I think that's covered?
That was my intent.
Okay, so as long as we're doing that, okay, good, thank you. Yes.
Just for the public's sakes, um, you know, this also continues to imply and show that we are committed to either renovating or building a new library, that there, there is plans, and as I expressed last week, I think, um, everything we're doing to this along is, is much needed, given the delays that we've had.
Any other questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
And Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number seventeen, resolution twenty-one fifty-five, two thousand and nineteen, five-year municipal winter traffic service agreement with PennDOT for snow remo-
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-one fifty-five, twenty nineteen, authorizing the township of Haverford to enter into a five-year municipal winter traffic services agreement with snow removal.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McGarrett, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number eighteen, resolution twenty-one fifty-six dash two thousand and nineteen, agreement between the Township of Haverford and the Pennsylvania State Historic Preservation Office, requirement for participation in the certified local government program.
So moved.
You have a second to Commissioner Wexler's?
Second.
McCluskey, any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number nineteen, resolution twenty-one fifty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, application for traffic signal approval Darby Road Streetscape.
Mr. President, make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one fifty-seven, two thousand and nineteen, authorizing David R. Berman, township manager, secretary, to submit an application for traffic signal approval for the upgrade of the pedestrian signals at the intersection of Darby Road and Benedict Avenue to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and assign the application on behalf of the municipality.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number twenty, resolution twenty-one fifty-eight dash two thousand and nineteen, application for traffic signal approval Eagle Road and West Darby Road and Eagle Road and East Darby Road Hathaway Lane for Republic Bank.
Mr. Greg?
What is Republic Bank, what, what do you mean there, Andy?
Uh, I can explain, Andy, uh-
Okay.
Commissioner McGarrett, after I read it. Motion to adopt resolution twenty-one fifty-eight dash two thousand and nineteen, authorizing David R. Berman, township manager, secretary, to submit an application for traffic signal approval at Eagle Road and West Darby Road and Eagle Road and East Darby Road Hathaway Lane, parentheses, Republic Bank.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hart, Hart, or Hart?
Clarification.
I'm sorry, seconded by Commissioner-
So for clar-
Actually, could I just ask you, before you explain it, could you just clarify that also that motion includes signing the application on behalf of the municipality, just like nineteen did?
Is that the gas station that's gonna be a bank?
Right.
Okay.
Commissioner McGarrett, the, the gas station that we, we had planning approval for, that, um, Republic Bank has purchased and is gonna build at the corner of Darby and Eagle, uh, as part of the planning agreement, they also agreed to certain, uh, traffic intersection improvements, both at the corner of Hathaway and at Darby Road, and this is the application to PennDOT, uh, so that those traffic, that, that intersectional improvements can be completed.
Yeah, it's a tough intersection.
It's, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna make it perfect, the, it's not gonna make the intersection perfect, I don't wanna overpromise this, but there, there should be some improvements.
If it just gets slightly off awful, I, I think that will be a big victory.
I'm not even gonna promise that, Larry.
I'll audition.
Any other questions or-
It's look, it's gonna look like, how about that?
Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Agenda item number twenty-one, release of funds, Haverford Reserve Parcel for Improvements.
Mr. President, motion to authorize the Township of Haverford to release the balance, the remaining money associated with the Haverford Reserve Parcel for Improvements in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Oliva. Any discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. McGarrett?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, agenda item number twenty-two is a continuation of the Citizens Forum. Anyone that'd like to speak on an agenda or a non-agenda item is welcome to do so. You have three minutes to do so, and we'll stay, listen to every last comment. Please come forward. They, just state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Steve Ogden, I've grown up and spent my entire life in Havertown. I wanna address the Bon Air fire situation. There's been a lot of disinformation spat it out today about Lieutenant Bruce McClay. Bruce McClay is an active member of the Proud Boys. I have pictures on my iPad of two months ago of him coordinating with them, which I would be more than happy to show with any of you. My big issue, I get that a lot of people are not happy with the Southern Poverty, Poverty Law Center, however, the FBI also just released a report about right, right-wing extremism and the violence that that entails. As a first responder, whether you're an EMT, a firefighter, a police officer, if you disagree with someone's politics, or whatever it may be, should that person really be the, the one responsible for saving your life or making the decision to save your life? I know of two people recently that have had home visits from the Proud Boys. They are an active hateful group. They have, they make threatening phone calls in the middle of the night, they threaten your parents, they threaten your pets. There's, there, there's so much that had- There, there, there is so much that has been ignored by many folks that have spoke today, but the reality is Bruce is an active member of a hate group. The Southern Poverty Law Center designates them as a hate group. To put that in comparison, they also do that with the KKK. This is not a friendly group to the entire country. I did not know about Bruce's previous history, and I'm very sorry for everything that he's experienced in his life. I'm disappointed with the chief of Bon Airford with the way he went, but I'm proud of you as commissioners for making the correct decision. If Bruce is let go, reopen the firehouse. If not, if, if, if they cannot disavow a member of a hate group, you have a fire department that's, what, four blocks away, Mennoa Fire Department? That, my whole point is, if you are in desperate need of help and the first responder does not agree with you or your beliefs, or-
I'm sorry, we're not gonna go back and forth. We wanna wrap it up, 'cause we're, we're comping some time.
My point is, I hope he truly is disavowed, I have the photos of him with the Proud Boys flashing a white power sign two months ago in my iPad right here. I wouldn't feel safe, and I think a lot of people wouldn't feel safe having their lives put in someone like that's hands.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, good evening. My name is Joe Colligan, I live at two-four-six Strathmore Road. I'm here to discuss the closing of the Bon Air Fire Company. I have family who live in that section of town, whom I love dearly. The Bon Air Fire Company has been there for them. My friend, his mother was taken out of, out of, out of her sick bed numerous times by the Bon Air Fire Company. You folks, what you did to the Bon Air Fire Company is despicable. It truly is. Because some kid had a different thought about a group than you folks did, and so therefore you pulled the trigger on the fire company? If you can do that and get away with it, who's next? Who's next? Another fire company? What if I had a association with the group who you folks didn't like? What happens to me? What do I get, banished from the township? I've been in this township for sixty-five years, guys. My family's been in this township for seventy-five years, and to do what you did to that Brook, Bon Air Fire Company is absolutely deplorable. I don't know how you can look yourselves in the mirror, and whomever was the one that made the decision on this and talked the rest of you into it? Well, that guy oughta lose his job and back all of this, because you put public safety, public safety, you put at a medium. It's absolutely deplorable. It's sickening, it's nauseating, it's whatever word you wanna apply to it. However you could've voted for something like that is totally beyond me. Do you have any ideas on when you're gonna open that fire company again? No, probably not, because it's up to the township hierarchy to make these decisions. I believe that's you folks, the hierarchy. I don't know if that word's ever been applied to you or not, but that's what you folks sometimes think you are, the hierarchy. You can pull the trigger on it, deal like this, and then just sit back and think it's all right? Who's next, guys? Somebody would've thought that doesn't agree with you? Who's next? Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mark Cohen, seventeen oh five, Sue Ellen Drive. I wasn't going to speak about the Bon Air issue, but hearing everything that's been said today, I'm gonna just take a minute on it before I get to what I came here to talk about. Uh, I would like to say that I wholly support, um, the statement read by, um, Mr. Lewis, Commissioner Lewis today, and knowing these commissioners, I don't think any one person strong-armed anybody on this, uh, township commission to vote the way they did on it. From the Trump administration on down in this country and down to the local level, there has been an unfortunate pervasiveness of language supporting white supremacy and anti-Semitism in this country. You don't have to look or read too many newspapers to find out what's been going on. I don't have any problem with somebody wanting to associate on their own time with other groups or people whose ideals and thoughts I may disagree with, but there is no basis for my taxpayer money to be spent to support an organization that is aligned with those values and those ideals. So again, I think that the decision here was made, and a proper one. What I came here to talk about, though, was something else. I'm a member of the Senior Advisory Committee for this township, and, um, speaking to resolution number sixteen, I noticed, um, at last week's meeting, and unfortunately I was out of town, Mr. Madonna made a presentation to this committee, uh, about the Suri and the facilities for senior citizens for Haverford Township. As you know, um, Haverford Township has about twenty percent of its population senior citizens over sixty-five. What I would like the, uh, commission, commissioners to undertake in conjunction with resolution number sixteen, that despite, or to include, of the various options you have in there, that there be a dedicated space, uh, placed in one of the, uh, facilities, however which way it goes, for senior citizens, if they have a spot to congregate and meet, and, uh, for activities such as the Suri provides, that that will be in there, whether it be a, a new library, a renovation of a library, or whatever you might decide to do with the Brookline School. Uh, right now, um, the, uh, facility that we are using is, uh, unacceptable, and we hope that when you do take the, um, options to create a new, uh, functional facility, that the, uh, benefits of the senior citizens of this community are incorporated into whatever facility, um, that the commission decides, uh, when they go forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Iris Crestville, I reside at thirty-seven oh nine Darby Road. I have come in after reading about the Bon Air situation, and I'm actually new to the and I'm actually new to the area. Me and my husband moved in about a year and a half ago. We have two middle school students that go to school. And there's actually been a couple of issues that arose, leading me up to why I'm here today against my husband's best wishes. But I'll share with you quick stories. When we first moved in, uh, my son was attempted, the school district attempted to recruit my son into an organization called Basis. It was considered a socio-cultural organization for the elite. They were meeting with leadership divisions from University of Pennsylvania. When I read the initiatives, most of the initiatives were surrounded by transgender affiliation and transgender awareness. I was a little upset that my son would be recruited into an organization that was considered elite, that went against our personal, our household values and our culture. Shortly after that, my daughter was in a situation at school where it was a black girl and a white boy. The white boy was singing a song. The song had the word, the N-word in it, and I won't say the word, but he was singing a song with the N-word in it. The little girl got upset and she hit him. The little boy was suspended and the little girl was applauded, as if she did something right. And I thought to myself, that's terrible because in no way, shape, or form should any person strike another for saying things that they don't agree with or saying, for using words or for using, you know, language that they don't approve of. I was, it, it really upset me, but I didn't say anything. I let it ride. And then I read the story about Bon Air, about this guy that's affiliated with Proud Boys. I did a lot of research on Proud Boys and I don't know if you guys are aware, but the president is Hispanic. He's Cuban, Enrique Dario. That is his name, I'm sure. Um, how is it that a white supremacist group can be filled with a bunch of Hispanics? The entire Florida chapter are Hispanics. So me, myself, being a conservative Republican, um, I've been called white supremacist. I've been called coon. I've been called terrible names because I'm a conservative. There's certain things that we don't believe in, that I don't align with. I don't mind that people can do whatever that they want. That's their business. It doesn't affect me or my job. I'm a mortgage broker. I lend to all people. White, black, even illegal immigrants. I don't agree with it. My job is to service clients. If it doesn't directly, uh, my personal opinion doesn't hinder me from doing my job. I don't know that this, this firefighter did anything wrong. If he refused to go into a house because it was a black family or a Hispanic family, that's one thing. But if he's never been reprimanded, if he never did anything wrong, why is it that his affiliation with a group of people that are conservatives gets, you know, he loses his job over it? It's pretty scary. So that's what I wanted to share. I hope that you consider it years ago. It was very easy. This is right, this is wrong. There's huge political climate that we're all, we're, we're kinda, you know, we want to keep everybody happy. But I implore you guys to just make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike Levin, four fourteen Mill Road. I'd like to bring several things to your attention. The Brookline School is on the block at this point either for demolition or for a site for the library or possibly for a playing field. I want to point out to you that there is another building which is of the same vintage in Havertown, the building that's used as the administration building, uh, for the library and for the, uh, for the school system. That'll continue as long as the school system feels that they are, they are appropriately housed there. There is no special reason for preserving another building of that generation. That's nineteen thirteen, probably to nineteen fifteen when it was constructed. The means to place electronic equipment in that building and all of the things that are necessary are going to prove to me a very overwhelming job. Primarily because the building is built out of stone, uh, and it is large, expansive, and has smaller rooms. There is no plan that's come forward for that site. However, you are taking steps through your engineer, uh, to bring in a proposal, how much to demolish. I want to point out that in demolishing it, it has to be demolished above ground and underground. That building has a foundation and the foundation has to be removed along with the utilities. And, uh, in the process of doing so, there's going to be a hole that's left with earth that's swung in there, uh, without thought of what it's going to be used for. So consequently, the whole soil that is refilled in that site has to be laid down in six inches and compacted and meeting a standard proctor, meaning that it will be, it will be, um, tamped to a level that could be, that could stand another building if necessary. In other words, you can't walk away from it because you have it underground. Whatever you do with this, I wish you luck. I can see that just running some figures, uh, that have, you have already been given on the Brookline School, it's going to be a maintenance problem for you.
Wrap up your remarks, Dr. Levin.
Second, on the Pency Trail.
You're gonna wrap up your remarks, please? You wrap up your remarks, you're at three, over three minutes now.
I can't hear it.
Can you wrap up your remarks, please?
I can't wrap them up until I have.
You have three minutes and that's, that's all you have.
To the Pency Trail, I'd like to have an additional period of time, please.
Okay, you have thirty seconds.
I'd like to, I'd like to finish this.
Okay, you have thirty seconds.
Concerning the Pency, Pency Trail, I looked into this before. There was no concept of where the trail was going to continue to. It may be exactly the wrong place to put a trail in to get across the road. At the time that I looked at it and looked at the papers on this, it had been set up as, uh, as a, as a site which was going to get a large bridge over Manoa Road. The cost of that large bridge at the time was one point five million dollars just for the bridge alone. And the engineer has been looking into, your engineer has been looking into that.
Dr. Levin, please wrap up your, we have many other people that want to speak, so.
I have a third point. Is there a reporter here? Is there any reporter from a newspaper here?
We have a lineup here to go through, so you had your three minutes, so you're, you're.
Is there a reporter here? Have you people tasked any newspaper to?
There's no newspaper.
Send a reporter to these meetings.
There's no coverage anymore in any of these meetings by the Delaware County Daily Times. They suspended, they suspended coverage.
I think you're gaslighting at this point.
We can't do anything about that. That's the, that's newspapers.
I think you're gaslighting at this point. You're avoiding the question.
No, they, they haven't been here for years, Doc. So, I'm sorry. Next.
Uh, my name is Larry Arata. I live at one-two oh four Edgewood Road. I'm a lifetime resident of Havertown Township. Uh, I'm one of the over five hundred residents who signed the petition in support of the board's handling of the Bon Air Fire Company. I am proud of the unanimous decision you have reached across party lines to assist upon the acceptance of the resignation of a member of a fire company, uh, of a, the resignation of a member of a fire company. That the Board of Directors, um, I'm sorry, the resignation of a member of a fire company who went through two initiation rites of a terrorist hate group. The Board of the Fi, of Bon Air Fire Company arrogantly refused to adhere to the township's ordinances that require public servants to adhere to basic principles of equal protection under the law. Over six hundred thousand Americans died in the Civil War so that the Fourteenth Amendment could be enacted guaranteeing equal protection of the law. Unfortunately, the US government only enforced the Fourteenth Amendment for about twelve years during Reconstruction, then decided in exchange for giving the Republican Party a tie-breaking vote in a tie presidential election. The amendment was not enforced again until the enactment of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. In the interim eighty-five years, the people of this nation who merely attempted to exercise their rights to vote or run for office or run a successful business or marry the person they chose, they were terrorized. They were terrorized by a very large terrorist organization, the KKK. And they have splinter groups today and the Proud Boys is one of them. Uh, they have been involved in violence at every one of their rallies. Uh, they've committed murder, they've committed intimidation online, over the phone, in the mail. Uh, this is an illegal, violent terrorist organization. And I am very proud that you stood up to them and to everyone who's following them and trying to make them some sort of boys' club that just has right-wing conservative politics on their mind. This is a hate group. And no one who volunteers has the right to serve unless they adhere to principles and the laws of this nation. And I'm so proud that you courageously stood up to these people who arrogantly think that they have the right to serve the public and not adhere to the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection of the law. So thank you very much for doing such a good job.
Hello, Balthazar Rubio, uh, Manoa Road. Everything that I wanted to say earlier today has been said. I just want to make a few points first. First, I'm Latino. So if you think I have any affiliation with the Proud Boys or anybody who's Klan Lite, as we've heard in the news media, the press, then they probably are. If you think I would like anybody like that, you lost your mind. They wouldn't want me in their group. I wouldn't want them in my house. I wouldn't want them near my family. My wife's also Latino. We moved to this community because it was safe, it was secure. We looked at, you know, the values that we saw when we came here and we said, this is great. What I didn't realize when we moved here was that, yes, it looks good on the outside, but there's something wrong. And what I realized after being here for several years, running for office, talking to thousands of people in this community, all right, thousands of people around here. What I didn't, what I found out was that there is a bias in this community. It's corrosive, but it comes from the left. It's coming from Antifa at this point. And what we witnessed here tonight was Antifa getting a win in Havertown. Shame on us. Shame on us because we shouldn't have allowed it. We shouldn't allow the Klan to have a say here. We shouldn't allow Antifa to have a say here. We shouldn't allow extremism into this community. I came here because it's safe, because a lot of the residents are exactly what I want to be around. All right? And when I looked at the action that was taken by the board for the township manager, I realized another thing. You didn't listen to us before you made this decision. There was no meeting. This was popped up. If there was a meeting, I missed it. I missed it on my Facebook, whatever. But you didn't hear anybody before you made this decision. And then when you told them to fire him, which, fine, fire a Proud Boy, throw him out the window because I don't care. All right? What I wanted to know, what was most important to me, was what had he actually done? Did you, in this police investigation, and that's something that does need to be talked about, how much money was spent in the police investigation of a non-criminal activity? All right, I'm a public defender. I'm in criminal court all the time, uh, defending the indigent. All right, every day. I got a trial tomorrow. I'm skipping prep to come here to listen to this and talk tonight. What I need to know is in that investigation, did you uncover even a single instance of malfeasance by this lieutenant? Was there one? I'm asking that question. Was there one? No?
We made, we made our statement. We've made our statement.
Okay, so there wasn't. I'm wrapping up. Sorry, I'm wrapping up. I won't go over time. So in the instance where this gentleman, this person, this Proud Boy, whatever it was, didn't actually do anything illegal or wrong, you then pushed the company and forced them to a position where they ended up defending the guy. And I don't, I'm not backing that judgment. That doesn't make sense to me. But then you shut down an entire fire company, increasing response time and increasing, even in the slightest bit, the danger to the community, that was wrong. And I'm here to talk about that. I don't agree with that move. And you did it because Antifa scored a point here.
I'm sorry, if you could close up your remarks.
That is my remark.
Thank you.
Antifa won Havertown zero. Shame on all of us.
Good evening. My name is Nicola Nacuzia-Rushden. I live at nine-twenty-seven Edgewood Road. I've lived here for over eighteen years and as someone else had indicated earlier, this is the first township meeting that I have been to. And the reason why I'm here is because of this Bon Air Fire Company situation. What I can say is my husband was a volunteer firefighter for a number of years. I know the training, the dedication, what entails someone to become a volunteer firefighter. And this isn't just about Mr., uh, the, the gentleman with the Proud Boys. This is about the fire company as a whole. You decided to shut down that fire company and take that fire company not only from this township, but also from those members who did nothing wrong. They put the time in, the training, they volunteered hours. Their families suffered potentially from it because of them not being around. This community is now in danger because even with shutting down that one fire company, as other people have said, response times are crucial. In twenty-twelve, my house caught on fire. My house burned down. Bon Air was one of the companies that was called in. If it weren't for the fact that all of the fire companies had shown up, my father and I would have been dead. So to know that even though Bon Air is not a first in from where I live, that they are no longer available to protect our community is shameful. And I've also been listening to comments about the Proud Boys and that they're a terrorist organization, which I find quite amusing because in the research that I've done, the investigation that I've done, and I too am a public defender, and I believe that this is part of what I need to do as an attorney because I may represent someone who has been charged with crimes, uh, in, integrated with any of these hate groups, is Proud Boys is a men, ma, male club. The FBI declared them an extremist group and then less than a month later took them off of it and said, no, they're not, that they aren't this, this white supremacist group. There was somebody that mentioned about photographs as little as two months ago. Well, I will tell you, I pulled it up on my phone. I looked it up. And what it is, it's a doxing article from Antifa that shows these photographs. And that webpage was created on June nineteenth of twenty nineteen. So yes, it was only two or three months ago, but there's no dates to those photographs. It could conceivably be that it was a year or over a year ago that those photos were taken and that he has disavowed that group. The last comment I want to make is that everybody is up here saying, you know, they're either right, they're left. There is so much discord right now in this township, in my community. And I would dare every single one of you, including the people that are in this room, to take, there is a test from Harvard about implicit bias. And if anyone, any one of you gentlemen or anyone in this room can take that test and tell me that they do not have any indications of implicit bias whatsoever, show it to me because I am damn sure that everyone here has some form of bias. Thank you.
Uh, Susanna Baruko, eight oh five Clifford Avenue in Ardmore. Um, I just wanted to, uh, say that, um, Commissioner Hart, I appreciate, uh, your clarifying that the, uh, vote on, uh, resolution twenty-one fifty-three, twenty nineteen is really just to get a cost for demolition of the Brookline School, but not a vote for demolition. Um, I would ask that the township commissioners provide, however, some clarity since the next resolution does not look at the Brookline School for any potential adaptive reuse. It looks at the current location comparative costs of building a new library at the current location of, or the Brookline School site or the renovation of the existing library. So there's nothing in the resolution, so no obvious intention to look at any potential use for the Brookline School. So I think that, uh, we were left to assume that demolition is still very much on the table and still very much at intention. Um, so I appreciate the offer of, uh, an opportunity for more public comment. And I think, uh, always, uh, I think it's great to be able to, for citizens to voice our concerns, but it doesn't really seem like public comment on the demolition or not demolition of the Brookline School. It's really the intention, but I would appreciate clarity. Thank you.
Dan Weber, twenty-two Walnut Hill Lane. I'm here to talk about the Bon Air Fire Department. As an educator, one of the first things we learn before we even go into the classroom, we are told whatever you do in private could possibly become public. We are told by our Pennsylvania southeastern regional representatives for our union that something as little as a red solo cup can be put against our moral clause. And the reason why I bring this up in comparison to the situation is, I believe as an educator, a fireman, a policeman, a politician, we should be held to a. a fireman, a policeman, a politician, we should be held to a higher standard than the public. We have to have higher morals than those around us. This is not an incident that took place when he was in college. This was an incident that took place while he was a member of Haverford Township Bon Air Fire Department. Secondly, I am proud to be a member of this township for a government who may go out on a limb, even though the public blowback be as it is, to stand up for people who may feel silenced because they are a minority in this community. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and fellow citizens. My name is Loretta Kurlish. I live at 518 Upland Road in Haverford. I've been to this meeting, some of the meetings before, and have spoken on the subject of taxes. I'll be brief on that, but I want to say I do disagree with the board's decision. And I also want to say, as a citizen, it never occurred to me, nor would it occur to me, that a first responder would not respond if I were in need or if my house was on fire. It just never occurred to me. But the reason I got up tonight is, I heard a lot in this room and from the commissioners about your values, the statements that you made. And I support those values. I think values are very important. They're important to me. But I speak to you tonight, and I'm not prepared to talk my issue completely, but I want to say, how many of the members of the commissioners here know why I've been upset with the township over real estate taxes, other than my commissioner and the chief of police? Have any of you been told? Even Mr. Burns? Anyone? Okay, well, I'm going to say this. Several years ago, I had a problem, and I looked up my taxes and some others in the community, and I found gross discrepancies. And when I brought this information to the attention of this township, a certain department, and I didn't use names, I just, and I wasn't upset, I just said, "I need to know how this works, because I need to talk to the county." And I went home that afternoon, and within thirty minutes of my going to a certain department in Haverford Township and asking some questions, a query, I got a knock on my door by a citizen of this township who was livid with me. And I didn't think about it at the time, because I knew this person, but it was definitely harassment and intimidation, as you describe it, or your values. So, I just want people to know, there are a lot of issues in this township, and I'm going to get my facts in order, and I want to talk, I'd like to talk to the commissioners off-record, but I am telling you that I hope that you do stand for values, because in some instances, when something like that happened to a citizen, the entire department would have been investigated and maybe even everyone fired after doing that. So, I, as a citizen, feel like I was harassed, and I think people should be aware that there's a lot of issues with our taxes, and we have a county-wide assessment going on right now. Forty-nine townships are being reassessed, and that reassessment will probably end up in higher taxes for many of us. And I believe, I'm not sure of this, but maybe Mr. Burns would know this, that Haverford Township actually was one of the townships, one of a few, that actually triggered the reassessment, which must cost a lot of money. And when I look at the taxes in Haverford Township, the majority of those taxes are for the school district. And if the school district knew how much money they lost on just one house over a five-year period, let's multiply that by several, so we're not putting our money where it's supposed to be. But I'm here to tell you that I believe I was harassed, and you were all supposed to be told about that behind closed doors, because I didn't want to embarrass myself or any other citizen or get anyone in trouble. I was just looking for fairness in taxation and assessments in this township. Again, I have no political agenda, and I was not out to get anybody personally, but that should never happen to anyone. That is, and I'm sure the lawyers here, and many of you are attorneys, would agree, that you don't have somebody at home getting a knock on her door, and it was very upsetting. This person was angry.
Please wrap up your...
I guess my time is over, but I want people to know that.
Thank you.
My name is Evan Cramp. I live at 222 Paddock Road, and I'm speaking in regards to the situation at Bon Air Fire Department. I really, just very briefly, wanted to state that my appreciation to all of you in the face of what you knew would be an emotionally-charged decision, your ability to act quickly and with clarity, and essentially to do your jobs and not let emotion get in the way of you performing your duties to the township, but instead upholding the laws, the bylaws of the township. That's your job, and you did it. And you did it swiftly in the face of what happened, and you've demonstrated that same swiftness and clarity now in the face of Bon Air's statement of, I guess, restitution, if that's what you want to call it. And I know you've sat up there and received a lot of emotion. Frankly, I feel like a lot of it is misguided emotion. I'm a little afraid at what seems to be a general misunderstanding of how the Constitution works, and also of the lax attitude of some of our neighbors towards the organizations in this township people want to join. But you didn't do that, and I appreciate you for it. Thank you.
Shannon Berman, 626 Haydock Lane. First of all, I want to thank you guys for taking what I believe to be the only action that you could. And obviously, this is a very politically-charged climate that we're in right now, has been since 2016, and you can't just minimize somebody who is, excuse me, wanting to join the Proud Boys, whether you believe that that's a group that's violent, hostile, others are not. So, I respect and applaud what you did, and I think that I would, in your shoes, I would have done the exact same thing, because you cannot be too safe in this political climate right now. Look at what happened tonight and all the people, and how upset and emotionally-charged everybody it was when they came up here. That in itself leaves me to believe, if you are, if you feel that we are under threat from an employee who's in a public position, then you did what you had to do. So, I thank you for that.
My name is Tom Scully. I live at 100 Treaty Road. One thing that hasn't come up that I find surprising, I'd like to do a show of hands real quick. Is anyone aware that the house across the street from Bon Air burnt down? Anybody?
Nick.
No, three, four months ago. That has never come up. And you want to tell us that response times don't matter? It's close as that wall is to that wall, and the house burnt down. Tell me about response times, guys. You're a firefighter. You're involved with the Fire Department, and you let that happen. And you sit here in silence. I have no idea where any of you stand on this, because you don't say a word. Where do we find out where you stand on this? You haven't said a word. You didn't say a word when the drag queens came. You didn't say a word when they dug up behind the YMCA. Somebody should have gone to jail for that. Somebody issued a permit for that. And you guys sit here. You're all a disgrace. All twelve of you are a disgrace, and if I had a bullet and I hit it now, and you're all gone, we'll vote new people in. We need new people to run. This is pathetic, and you are all a disgrace.
Sure. Any other like to speak?
Hi, my name's Laura Cavender. I live at 11 Glenbrook Road. I just want to say, very briefly, thank you for what you've done with the Bon Air Fire Department. I think it was the right decision. I think it was protective of the marginalized people in our community. I think we've talked a lot about response times, but I think if you're a person of color, or if you're a person that feels threatened by the Proud Boys, your safety's important too, and your response time is important. And I think if someone belongs to a hate group and they're charged with protecting you, that you deserve to be protected. I also would like to say, I'm not a member of Antifa, and I'm just a mom, and I care about the safety in my community, and I trust the newspapers, and I trust what you've done. So, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on any declarative? Okay, that concludes our citizens forum. I'm sorry.
Ronnie O'Connor Jr., 2608 Chestnut Avenue in Ardmore, PA. My father was a lifelong member of the Bon Fire Company, so I'm very aware of the commitment that it takes to be a firefighter. Do we all make bad decisions in life, mistakes? Yes, I think we do. Never heard of Proud Boys before. This came up, and being interested in the Fire Department and the township as I am, I sat there and said, "Okay, let's do some investigation." I investigated. I started relying on the Southern Poverty Law Center, or the ADL, or newspapers. I went right to the Proud Boy website. Okay? Proud Boy website, on their banner, the banner leading in for the website that's supposedly recruiting white supremacists in this hate group, the banner says, "We want all races, all religions, gay or straight." Sounds like a pretty inclusive group, right? Now, excuse me, they spend, I don't know how much it costs to do a website, but I guess it's a big, yeah, it's a, let's put our tin foil hats on. So, then we'll scroll down. We'll scroll down that same very website. They have the name of their, the leader, the head guy, and it's a Hispanic American. On the same webpage, on the homepage, there's a video of a black man explaining what Proud Boys are. It became, it was a joke, actually, from a radio show years ago, is all this originated from. A radio show joke of being politically incorrect. And this is what the black man on the video of the homepage of this hate group, okay? This hate group, now, how many people, show of hands, Googled the Proud Boy webpage? Okay? Am I lying, or am I, no, it's not. But I guess this is some grand conspiracy, that they got this black guy to do the video just to bring all these hate people. Okay, now, if I'm a hate guy, I'm a white supremacist hater, and I'm looking for a group to join, okay? That they volunteer was, I'm interested in hate groups, so I'm going to join this group. I click on this, a Proud Boys are a hate group. I click on this webpage, and I see, "We take gays and straights and all religions and all races." That's going to turn me off if I'm a hater, right? I think I would say, "No, I'll find another page." But then maybe I'm still saying, "Well, maybe that's just a catchy little thing, you know, just to trick everybody." So, I scroll down, and I see this video, and here's a black spokesman for this white hate group. Come on, guys. I hope we do more investigation than the Southern Poverty Law Center, because one thing I noticed, and I'm fifty-three years old, I've seen hate and stuff before, but I've seen it toned down a lot, honestly. Now, the last couple of years, yes, but it's coming from the left. The Southern Poverty Law Center is, they're singing their swan song, or they were. Now, they got their issues now. How many times have they been sued for defamation of characters, of groups? Many times, many times they're wrong. Same with the A.D.L.
Wrap up your remarks.
Okay, I'm wrapping up.
Thank you.
They are nothing but like an auto mechanic that goes down Haverford Road throwing nails in the street to drum up tire sales, okay? They're only looking for trouble, so this way they can keep their business going, okay? Guys, just go through, I know you might fear that website. Go through it, and then, you know, take another look, okay? I'm sure you're...
Thank you.
You should get another source.
Let's not, let's not, let's not go back and forth. Let's not go back and forth. Let's not go back and forth, please.
Bye.
Not go back and forth, please. Yes, you have one, one last.
Everybody, please respect...
Yes, Steve Ogden again. I just want to clarify one thing that quite a few people seem to have a misconception of. Nobody has said that the Proud Boys are a white supremacist group. A Puerto Rican American is the leader.
No, no, we're not going to go back and forth. That's not going, we're not going to go back and forth in the audience. Please, please, no comments from the audience. He has the floor. He has the floor. Go ahead. You have the floor.
Antifa killed the people at Charlottesville, right? They're the ones that drove the car and killed Heather Hyer. But I just wanted to clarify that whoever has said that the Proud Boys are a white supremacist group are extremely wrong. Go on their website. They're a right-wing extremist group. They're not white supremacists, that's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, that concludes our citizens forum. And now we turn to agenda item number twenty-three, new business. Does anybody have any new business to bring before the board?
Mr. President?
Seagull.
I'd just like to make a motion to put a resolution, to introduce the resolution scheduling the public hearing relating to the ordinance relating to sidewalks. And I have copies that were circulated today anyway, but I do have copies that were needed. It's just scheduling the hearing for October 7th, 2019, so first I have that added to the agenda.
Why can't we put it on the work session first?
It's a public hearing. We have to schedule a public hearing.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay. Don't think we need to vote? We just can put it on the agenda.
And I would move...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay.
And I'd move for the introduction of Resolution 2159-2019, and I'll just read it, because the public doesn't have it. Whereas proposed amendment to the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, Chapter 160-5, subdivision and land development, general purpose and applicability, design standards, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Haverford desires to keep its citizens' and business interests informed, the status of proposed amendment to Township Code, known as the General Laws of the Township of Haverford, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Haverford, County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, that a public hearing shall be held on Monday, October 7th, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. in the Commissioners' Meeting Room, Haverford Township Municipal Services Building, 1014 Darby Road, Haverford, Pennsylvania. And this is relative to the sidewalk, post-sidewalk amendments to the code.
Thank you.
Give me a second.
You have a second? Oh, okay. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
For everybody to clarify, we will separately publish the ordinance. We'll discuss it at a work session, but because it involves zoning, that's why we have to have a public hearing. I think you just said that.
Right, and the ordinance was actually on our work session agenda for last week as well, but it'll be the same ordinance.
Okay.
Do you, you just...
Do you want to, you have a comment, or do you?
We're just putting it on the, scheduling the hearing. There's no substance.
We need a motion.
I think we have it.
He voted.
Okay, I have a second.
I think...
Okay. We'll just take a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or mentioned? Okay. Any other new business to come before the board? You have something?
Well, I would like to respond, because I'm not going to put my foot in my mouth here, but I'm going to tell you something. Some of the people in the audience said, "Nobody responded from this board," and did this and did that. We have people on this board, like myself, that are to the right, we're conservatives. People to the left, they're liberal, okay? I just want to give this board a lot of credit, because what happened, I didn't hear one of those people complaining and saying that we were all at fault. I didn't hear anybody say, "Why didn't that man just accept his resignation?" It would have been all over. But nobody said that. So, I want to explain that part to you, because that would have ended it. The fire trucks would have never left, and the whole problem would have ended.
No, we're not going to go back and forth here. We're not going to go back and forth.
Back and forth, we're here, but...
You can add a sidebar if you want at the end.
What I'm trying to, what I want to say is, I am very proud of this group for coming together, which we did. We all stuck together on this. Mr. Lewis, for being the president, he worked very hard on this. Dave Berman, our new township manager. So, they stuck their necks out, and of course, we did everything we could as fast as we could to get... could to get this whole thing ironed out. So as far as the board saying nothing, I'm sorry, and I'm sorry for my wife, but I had to say something tonight. And I just hope everybody understands what I'm saying is, none of those people said, if that man had accepted that resignation, it was all over.
I agree.
It was the end. I got to tell you, this board looked very strongly at that position. And I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? No. Okay, we'll go to other business. It was brought with the Commissioner Dubea.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to inform the residents of the first ward. My very popular first ward meeting is September 25th, 7 PM at the Bon Air Firehouse. And as usual, our police leaders, Deputy Chief Joe Hagan and Deputy and Police Chief John Viola will be there, as long as Dave Berman. And it's a very important meeting because we're discussing several issues affecting the first ward and indeed the township itself. So I think even, Jim, you're coming, right?
Yes.
Even Jim Burns coming. We will be talking and giving an update regarding the billboards as well. So, thank you. I know it's a pretty word, but.
Mr. Leva?
I have nothing.
Mr. Plaskett?
I just wanted to thank all the residents who were able to come out to the meeting we had last week with Pendott regarding the Ardmore Avenue Bridge, traffic patterns, et cetera. The video of that meeting, if you weren't able to make it, is available on the Township's YouTube channel and will be playing on the cable channel. Other than that, I'll give everybody the next meeting.
Just a couple of quick things first to remind residents that the, that Haverford Township Day is on Saturday, October 5th. Unfortunately, I will be stuck on planes coming back from a business meeting across the country from 9:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night, so I don't expect to get there. We will be having a constituent meeting. It's a joint meeting with Commissioner McCluskey, Commissioner Hart and I in this room at 7:00 PM on October 23rd, and that's open to all residents of our wards. Just to address the senior question that Mr. Cohen brought up, we are aware of it, and we are, we strongly understand those issues in planning. The library does as well. You know, in the fourth ward, over, you know, two-thirds of all the adult residents are over 45 years old, and nearly half of the adults are over 60. So we are quite aware of the issues and the concerns. It's a difficult issue because of space and everything else, but we, we are aware, and as Mr. Goldsmith spoke last month, or last week, it seems like a month ago, we are aware of it. And finally, before we meet again, we will have celebrated the Jewish New Year, so I would like to just wish those who celebrate, Shana Tuvah Tikatevu, which means have a good and sweet New Year. Thank you.
Next question, Commissioner McGarity?
Yeah, no, Andy, Dave and I are going to talk over a couple of things, but other than that, nothing right now.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Just want to reiterate with my friend to the left of me, Mr. McGarity stated, the only association I've ever heard Jimmy make with the left is that he's to the left of me. So it's not a political decision. This was a decision that we based, politics had nothing to do with it.
Mr. Wech.
Thank you. Well, I will have my quarterly constituent meeting at the Bon Air Firehouse on Thursday, September 26th. There'll be a host of issues there, as I am the Commissioner of the ninth ward where the firehouse resides. On a positive note, though, this past week, Music Fest was a great success. So as far as sitting here and listening to some negative and some positive things from the township, we had a great community gathering on this past Saturday. My thanks to all those that helped organize it. As you might be able to tell from my voice, I was probably in bed sleeping most of that day, deserted by my family, so I wouldn't contaminate them. I'm not contagious anymore. I've been antibiotics for at least 12 days now, so. But there are some positive things, and I'd like just to point out that that was a positive thing that happened this weekend, in addition to many other things that happened this weekend that we were involved with, so. But my meeting will be on Thursday evening, the 26th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eric Holmes?
Mr. President, thanks. I just want to address my neighbors and friends on Winfield Ave and in the Windwood Park area. We are still compiling data and information for all of you about the questions and the information session that we had here, as well as in one of the homes on, on Winfield Ave, about storm management in the future. And I appreciate all of your patience. While the township officials and I compile more information, I expect to have a constituent meeting later in October, and prior to that time, have as many answers as I can to the questions, as well as provide data for everybody in the sixth ward. And I just want to, I just want to thank everybody who came out, no matter what their positions were on this issue. It is very important for all of us and very important here in America that people feel empowered to speak their minds, and I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. I just have one item, which was given to me by our township manager. Pico, having an open house to discuss reliability issues, which we've had a lot of in the fifth ward, and they will be doing that on Wednesday, October 16th, here in this room. And we'll put out an announcement on social media and our website, and as I'm sure all the commissioners will put out emails as well. That's all I have, but I know Commissioner McGarity has one other.
I forgot to mention one thing. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, where did you go? Tim Denny just disappeared on me, but I wanted to say, Tim Denny's retiring in October. This will be his last October Haverford Township Day. And anyway, Tim's done a great job. We've been doing that together from day one. So, Timmy, I don't know where you went, you cut out on me, but you were there a minute ago, but come see Tim Denny on October 5th.
Well, Jamie, if he comes back in, we'll give you another shot. Commissioner Segal has one additional thing to add.
I apologize, but I think people will be happy to hear this. We had our Ardmore Avenue Bridge meeting this week, and Pendott informed us, and the townships confirmed that the contract for repaving of Eagle Road has been approved. And it is, it is expected to start sometime in mid to late October at the earliest, but must be completed by December 20th. So relief related to Eagle Road is on the way, and that is paving from township line to county line. So that's county line. That includes Windwood Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything to add?
Not standing adjourned.
Thank you all.